All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. We have two public hearings tonight. The first hearing is the UDO amendment to our land use plan of 2040. So I'll turn that over to Mr. Post.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. We've talked about this a few times in a work session and in a previous regular session. The Planning Department has worked with the Planning Board over the last several meeting months to bring about some technical revisions to our subdivision regulations dealing with roadway construction and really the idea is we, or the problem is, we had some inconsistent language in two sections of the document that talk about paving standards, when you should pave, when you should not pave. So we're cleaning that up to ensure that road construction standards are consistent throughout the county when larger subdivisions are proposed. We're also, in the table that you have, we're also modernizing some of the material references and standardizing those with DOT material references and their subdivision road standards that they have for materials and compaction and things of that nature, just really technical type of information. And then also, this also clarifies paving requirements for campgrounds as well, when you pave for those, because the campground road standards are found in the subdivision section. So those are the amendments that we're asking the Board to consider in this public hearing. The Planning Board did meet on these changes and unanimously recommended that the Board consider adoption, and part of that is holding a public hearing, and they held a public hearing as well. Nobody from the public showed up at that hearing, but that's what's before the Board for consideration this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Signed up for public comment tonight for the public hearing on the UDO amendments. Anyone in the audience want to talk about these UDO amendments? Is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it is closed. Moving on now to our next public hearing. Go ahead and call that to order, and it's over transit grants. And Ms. Alm is here to speak on our transit grants.
So this public hearing is for the fiscal year 26 Community Transportation Program Grant Applications. As the applicant, Jackson County Transit will be seeking permission to apply for the Public Transportation Program funding, enter into agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, provide the necessary assurances and the required local match. Just a little background, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Integrated Mobility Division manages grant applications with the Federal Transit Administration for mass and community transportation programs. And so this allows rural communities to work directly with their state rather than needing to apply directly for funding through the Federal Transit Administration. So there are four different grant programs that we are applying for. The first one is the 5311 Administrative Grant Program that helps to subsidize the administrative costs of running a transportation system, which does include administrative salaries and benefits, as well as office supplies, uniforms, training, and marketing. The 5310 Operating Grant Program supports transportation operating costs for the elderly and individuals with disabilities. The Combined Capital Grant Program allows the community transportation systems the opportunity to apply for the public transportation system to maintain their fleet and other capital needs. For example, this year that we're applying for fiscal year 26, we are actually looking at replacing two raised roof vans with lifts, the lettering and logos for each vehicle, and two propane conversions. Also included in this is a replacement repeater station for radio communication. And so all vehicles and equipment have met the end of their useful life, and so they are available for replacement with NC DOT IMD. The Non-STI Rural Expansion Vehicle Program that supports the rural systems who are interested in applying for expansion vehicles. And so we are asking for one expansion raised roof van with a lift, lettering and logos, and one propane conversion. So the project itself, the total project amount is $736,477, and the local share, which is our local match that we're asking for, is $162,061. So that, those are the total project costs of the different four grants that we're asking for. And just to note that the local share amount is subject to state funding availability. We did have some in the past where state funding wasn't available, but we haven't had that in the last few years. Please note that in the corner of the room, there are some voluntary Title VI public involvement surveys that are available for completion from the public. And do you have any questions, or would you like to answer that later in the program?
Anyone sign up for public comments tonight?
No.
Questions? Is there a motion to close transportation public hearing?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Call our meeting to order. First up tonight is the approval of the agenda. If there are no needs for additions or omissions, I'll seek a motion for approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to the approval of the minutes. Before you, we have the regular meeting and the work session from September 3rd. If there are no needs for omissions or additions, I'll seek a motion for approval.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to administrative reports, Chairman's report. We are in Cashers at the Albert Carlton Library, which is awesome. It's the first time we've had a meeting up here in a long time. And I'd like to thank county staff for coming out. I know it's a long process to get everything set up, and there's always a hiccup in the system. We always have something that goes wrong, but thank you guys for working hard tonight, and ladies. Any other reports from Commissioners?
I have a comment if I may, Mr. Chairman. In our last meeting, when we moved forward with the middle school funds, or grant match, if the school's fortunate enough to get the grant, there was some comments from the public regarding needs of Blue Ridge School, as well as Fairview and other schools. And in a conversation I had with Mr. King before our meeting, my concerns, and that was part of my delay in vote, my vote, is I was kind of torn between building something new and not fixing up what we got. And Mr. King and Ms. Fox are working on a financial package to not only meet those projects that we've approved, but, and some other projects, but to assist these schools, particularly Fairview and Blue Ridge, with funding all of their needs, and not just the cafeteria component that we approved. So he'll bring that to our attention, what a future meeting that's very close will be held, might be one day this week, and maybe in our October meeting, he'll give us an update. But it would be, the parents of Blue Ridge and Fairview will be pleased.
And this weekend, there is a work day, like a parent work day that's been going around for Blue Ridge. So if you have time and want to volunteer, look on Facebook at Blue Ridge's Facebook page, and there's plenty of availability. Painting, cleaning gutters, all kinds of little projects, so. Any other reports from Commissioners tonight? Moving on now to our County Manager Kevin King's report.
We have internet? No.
We do have internet up here. Some places.
Okay, I'm just going to bring you all up to speed on the projects that's going on currently. We are in the latter stages of the Aquatic Center, should be ready by mid to late October, and then we'll start the process of the opening of that facility. Center for Domestic Peace, we are in the starting phases, of course, but it's going along very good. The subfooters have been installed. Right now, we're waiting on the power line, I think is being moved, and once that starts, they'll start right up with the building. The Cashers Glenville Recreation and the Whittier Koala Park, both are bid out, and we're expecting bids back October 25th. So that'll give time for those, both those projects. One of them is $1,144,826, another is $2,72,429. Department of Aging, we went with an architectural firm to look at some of the structural components. We had to get a structural engineer to look at some of the modification, and we employed an architect, because it's going to change some of the look of the building, depending on what we do, or how we do. So I told him to do a kind of a rendering to give us some options, and if we change the look of it a little bit, then we can save some funding. If we put it back like it is, it's going to be, you know, in the 500, 600,000 range, just to fix the problem. So we're trying to do different looks at it, just to see if we're, which route we can go. You heard a presentation from Odell Thompson last time at the County Fire Department, and also the Administration Building Justice Center piece. So right now, we're still in the fund development of all three of those. Jackson County Fairgrounds, this is, of course, new, and we are, I wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on kind of the initial steps we're involved in. First, we're doing an assessment of the water tank, which we will have to have for sprinkler systems, anything we develop, or not property, we're going to have to have that, make enough to do that. And then we're also looking at, we got McElrath Engineering Firm out of Waynesville to do, start looking at all the electrical plans, HVAC, all that stuff for the building. So we are looking at a 100 by 200-foot building, or a 20,000-square-foot enclosed building, and also a 40,000-square-foot open-air pavilion. So on that facility with 400 parking spaces. Nothing new on the Dillsboro Park at this point. The Greenway Project, we did complete last month with one additional piece of property, waiting on additional development on that Greenway. Plus, we also are looking at other possibilities in the south and north of the county to expand walking, as the, how do you call it, mobility. So anyway, we're looking at different projects that we can dovetail on. The NC DOT path, I think, that has been approved. Right, Mike?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. So we will be looking at and trying to find the match dollars for that. The match for that is $417,440. So we'll bring that at a later date. Did want to let you know, we went up for an RFQ for Architecture Engineering Services for Fairview School, and in part of that process, we're going to add Blue Ridge to that mix, just to get maybe some preliminary estimates, and in that way, we can come back with a sound financial package that we can look at and present. Any questions?
Glad Whittier Parks getting started. I've heard a lot from the community, so what's the timeframe on it? Give us a little bit of...
Well, we'll get the bids back on the 25th, and then we'll go through the process of identifying a qualified bidder, and then we'll be proceeding that at the November meeting, probably the mid, one in mid-November.
That's good.
Signed up for public comment tonight. Moving on now to our consent agenda. Up first tonight via technology is Ms. Darlene Fox.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'll go over the highlights for the month of August. The general fund revenues collected to date, $20,374,483. That's 21.68% of budget. The average is 16.67, so it's over 5.01%. The expenditures are at $14,755,437, at 16.68% of budget. Average is 16.67, so it's right on target. The revenues at this point are $5,619,46 more than the expenditures. But included in those revenues are accounts receivable for last fiscal year in the amount of $6,653,148. The abhorrent taxes collected, $13,252,882, that's 29.26% of budget. The motor vehicle taxes collected are $377,032, that's 18.10% of budget. And the prior year taxes collected are $90,321, that's 18.06% of budget. We received the sales and use tax distribution in the amount of $1,978,665 for August, which represented May sales. That is 10.74% more than we received last August. The Article 46 distribution is $221,749, and the average increase for the fiscal year is 4.24%. The landfill disposal fees collected are $692,503, that's 21.69% of budget. And the prior year disposal fees are $11,715, that's 14.64% of budget. The growth revenues, we're seeing an increase in code enforcement permits. They're over worth a month of 3.84%, and also the registered days is up 4.10% over the current percentage. And those are two of the main ones that represent where the growth has started. The general fund contingency amount at the end of August, $1,274,704.58. I'd be glad to answer any questions on the report.
Any questions from the Board tonight on the financial board? None tonight. Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Thank you.
Up next, we have tax collector and refund report from Ms. Enson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of August, the current taxes collected were $9,602,765. The delinquent taxes collected were $62,853.98. The total collections for the month of August were $10,240,88.86. There were refunds of $30,646.87. And just so you're aware, $28,280 went back to United Community. That was for taxpayers that have their property mortgaged, and they paid, and then their escrow also paid. So we're refunding the escrow. And releases of $379.64. Any questions?
Questions from the Board tonight? If not, I'll seek a motion to approve both items in the consent agenda, the financial report, and the tax collector and refund report.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to new business and the retirees insurance plan.
So I was asked to look at the retirement insurance plan. This is basically an insurance plan that's for eligible Jackson County employees, once they reach a certain level of service, as outlined in the eligibility requirements. A couple of just modifications, mostly just dates, so it'd be whatever today's date is, where the effective date would be, is the only modification. This is adding in Commissioners to the retirement plan. Any Commissioner that has over 12 years of service with Jackson County is under... ...who has served three terms or 12 years of service with Jackson County, eligible Commissioners must be currently fulfilling their term in office at the time of retirement. Prior terms of service as Jackson County Commissioner will be credited toward their required 12 years of service.
Starting the consent, or I'm sorry, the new business, the retiree insurance plan. Is there a motion for approval? In a second? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Stripling?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Braxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Lytzen?
Yes. Moving on now to legislative, ABC merger amendment resolution R24-09. And Mr. King?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table that motion for now.
Okay.
Table that item.
Is there a second to the tabling of the item?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor for tabling? For tabling the vote for the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Carey, so we'll move that to another date. Next up is both are grants. First up is Ms. Alm with Resolution 5311, 5310, and the Operating Combined Capital Transportation Grant Resolution R4-10.
So, based on the information that was presented at the public hearing, Jackson County Transit will be seeking permission to apply for the Public Transportation Program funding, enter into agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, provide the necessary assurances and the required local match. Again, the total estimated amount... Estimated amount requested for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. The total project amount is $736,477, with a local match of $162,061. So before asking the request of the approval of Resolution R24-10 as presented, I would like to ask if you have any questions about this particular project and grant applications.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Braxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Stripling?
Yes.
Chairman Lytzen?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Alm.
Moving on now to subdivision UDO regulations and UDO amendments. And Mr. Post.
Chairman, Commissioners, we've had several occasions to talk about the amendments and what they are, so I won't necessarily go over those again unless we have some questions. But again, these are technical amendments to the subdivision section of our ordinance, Unified Development Ordinance. When the Board is considering tonight whether to approve that, state statute, General Statute 160D 605 also requires that the Board of Commissioners consider whether or not the amendments are consistent with our adopted land use plans. What should have we received tonight is a statement, a proposed statement of consistency for the Board's consideration, which says that we do believe these are consistent with the Jackson County Land Use Plan, more specifically Plan LU2, Objective 1, which is to continue to monitor developing land use trends, ensure the county, the county development ordinances meet the needs of the county. And we do believe that, staff does believe that this is reasonable and in the public interest. So if the Board is, considers approving that, we would also ask that you consider approving the consistency statement as well. And of course, I'll answer any questions the Board may have.
No, you mentioned paving?
Yes.
Campgrounds, is that, is this going to require paving, or is it just an option in certain situations?
So the clarification here is that for larger campgrounds, more than 15, we do require paving. Under 15, we don't require paving, but it wasn't clear, and that's what this is going to, what we call level one.
That's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah, yeah. So it wasn't clear enough, so we want to clarify it here.
Just no questions from the Board? No, I'll seek a motion for approval of the UDO amendment and the statement of consistency.
So moved, Chairman.
In a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Stripling?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Braxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Lytzen?
Yes.
Last on the agenda tonight is recreation... Last on the agenda tonight is Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. We've got one position available, and one person has submitted and gotten a recommendation from the Director of Parks and Rec, Ms. Sarah Stollman, has been nominated to serve on this board. Is there a motion to approve Ms. Stollman? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? None opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Stollman. I know it's not live, but you'll see it tomorrow, and enjoy working on that board. We do not have any press here tonight, and see anybody. So with that, we do have a need for closed session. Is there a motion to move to closed session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor? None opposed? We'll take a quick ten minute break, and then we can be... Coming out of closed session, there was no action taken. Quick reminder that we have a public hearing on October first at five fifty-five, and then followed by our regular meeting at six, and our work session at six thirty. With no other items on the agenda, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, we are adjourned.